It is now recording. You are ready when you are, Jeff.
Um, I need that screen back. Is it somewhere handy?
Yes.
All right. Are we ready? Now my phone doesn't want to say that there. Okay. At this time, we will call to order the City of Kenai Planning and Zoning Commission meeting for May 27th, 2020, where you stand for the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Trying to share the flag.
Yeah, exactly. And thank you. All right. Now I need that screen back again. Here's Diane.
Hello.
Hello. Um, I need that shared screen again. Sorry.
Your own roll call.
Yeah. Okay, that's easy enough. Item A2, roll call please.
Okay, Chairman Twite.
Here.
Vice Chairman Fikes.
Here.
Commissioner Springer?
Absent.
Commissioner McIntyre?
Here.
Commissioner Greenberg?
Yeah.
Commissioner Halsted?
Here.
Commissioner Askin?
Here.
Chairman, you have a form.
All right. Thank you. Item A3, Agenda Approval. Wishes of the Commission.
I move we approve the agenda as presented.
Second?
To, uh, I guess, non-stable items, right?
Uh, you would be correct. And we have a second. Is there any objection? Seeing none, hearing none, the agenda is approved. Item A4, Consent Agenda.
I move we approve the consent agenda as presented.
All right. Commissioner Askin, approved. Motion. Do we have a second? Second by Commissioner Halsted. Any objection? Seeing none, the consent agenda is approved. Item C, Schedule Public Comment, we have none. Item D, Unscheduled Public Comment. Is there anyone wishing to speak to an item that is not on the agenda?
There's nobody online.
Nobody online? All right, then we will move along then to item E, Consideration of Plats. We have two before us tonight. E1 is Resolution PG 2020-10, Preliminary Subdivision Plat of Baron Park 2020 Replat, Submitted by Segasur Surveys 3485 Roseland Street, Soldatna, on behalf of the City of Kenai. And a staff report, please.
Thank you, Chair Twite. So this PG 2020-10 covers the Baron Park subdivision, charts 1 through 5. This plat was prepared at the request of the city. Uh, City Council had held a work session in 2019 to discuss the Baron Park subdivision. And the council passed resolutions 2019-55 and 2019-54 that amended management authority between the Airport Fund and the General Fund. But the memorandum and the work session also discussed some other issues with the plat. So, um, this plat will add the communication tower to tract 1. Tract 1 has the city shop and so it'll move this communication tower to the city shop parcel that is in the General Fund. And then the fire training facility would then remain tied to the Airport Fund. This plat would also then add the new dog park from tract 4 onto tract 5, which is where Dobbinspec Family Park is. And so tract 5 would all be tied with the General Fund and then tract 4 with the dog park carb diet would remain tied to the Airport Fund and it would be available for lease. Tract 3, uh, I should say the the parcel boundary between tracts 3 and 4 does not currently have the existing road dedicated. So this plat would also dedicate Dobbinspec Circles that runs between tract 3 and tract 4. And so this plat would resolve some issues between the different management funds for the city. And it would also dedicate this, this road that, uh, that exists and has been built. Uh, this plat meets city code for, for subdivisions. The recommendation of the Commission will be sent to the Kenai Peninsula Borough for approval. The plat does not vacate any existing utility easements or clearing easement within the tracks. There's water and sewer within the right of ways of Marathon Road, Magic Avenue, and Dobbinspec Circle. And I recommend the Commission approve the preliminary plat, or the preliminary plat of Baron Park 2020 Replat, subject to the following condition, that further development of the property conforms to federal, state, and local regulations. And then I'll just note that, um, I had, uh, there were several attachments to this. So, so there's the resolution and the application and the plat and an aerial map, which I usually include. I did also include a, just a hander and plat with the changes because I thought it would be useful for the Commission to consider, um, in their evaluation of this plat. And that is the end of my staff report.
All right. Thank you. Um, I guess we will look for a motion for PG 2020-10.
Commissioner?
Commissioner Halsted.
Uh, I move we approve PG 2020-10. Uh, anybody read more into that? PG 20, Preliminary Subdivision Plat of Baron Park. Excellent.
If you want to, go ahead. Yeah, actually, go ahead.
Okay. I move we approve Resolution PG 2020-10, Preliminary Subdivision Plat of Baron Park 2020 Replat, on behalf of the City of Kenai.
All right. Do we have a second?
I'll second.
All right. We'll open it up for public testimony. Anyone wishing to testify to PG 2020-10? Looking to see if there's anyone out there now.
There's nobody out there.
All right. So still nobody out there. So then we will close the public hearing, bring it back to the Commission for discussion or comments. Or comments? Anyone have any questions or comments?
I would have a comment. I've been kind of all over this area personally, and I think they've done a great job with the, the progress in building the park and clearing it out for the dog park and prepping the roads and even the city buildings are well done. I think it's a great little location. And they've done a good job of, um, creating it and maintaining it.
I would agree. Anyone else?
I do have just a question of information.
All right, Commissioner McIntyre.
So I assume this is a city park and so the city will take care of the dog park. Is that right?
Uh, Ms. Appleby.
Uh, Commissioner McIntyre, yes, that is correct. The, the city will cover the maintenance of the dark park. I, I do think there's been a pretty active citizens group involved in planning the park. But the land, all of these parcels are owned by the city and so the, the city would ultimately be responsible. Okay.
Anyone else? Seeing none, hearing none, we will please call the roll for Resolution PG 2020-10.
Commissioner Greenberg?
Yes.
Commissioner McIntyre?
Yes.
Commissioner Halsted?
Yes.
Vice Chairman Fikes?
Yes.
Commissioner Askin?
Yes.
Chairman Twite?
Yes.
Motion passes.
All right. Moving on to item E2, Resolution PG 2020-14, a preliminary subdivision plat of Newton-Segura subdivision, submitted by Segasur Surveys on behalf of Frank D. and Marilyn K. Newton, 260 Juliuson Street, Kenai, 99611, and Peggy A. Segura, 270 Juliuson Street, Kenai, Alaska, 99611. Staff report.
Thank you, Chair Twite. So PG 2020-14, uh, for the Newton-Segura subdivision plat, this plat was, uh, was submitted by the surveyor on behalf of the owners in order to resolve an encroachment. So the driveway from tract B encroached onto tract A2. And so this plat would res, would resolve the encroachment. Actually, it also looks, um, like one of the structures on tract A2 was also pretty close to the property line. So it could also potentially resolve an encroachment into the setback. So access to these lots is from Juliuson Street, uh, which is gravel and maintained by the City of Kenai. And Juliuson Street connects to Beaver Loop Road. Beaver Loop Road is paved and maintenance will be taken over by the city later this year once the, um, the paving job is complete for Beaver Loop Road. Uh, let's see, the plat does not include the notation that no private access to the city maintained right of ways is permitted unless approved by the City of Kenai. Uh, and then in one of my conditions, it, uh, one of the notes here. Plat note 4, it still references the state even though plat note 3 already mentions that this will be a city maintained right of way. Uh, and so there's a recommendation to remove plat note 4 because it's redundant. And it's, it's there because the, the surveyor probably had it written as the state initially because the road is currently being maintained by the state. But within the next month or so, the city will be taking over maintenance of Beaver Loop Road. On the Commission end, um, I believe at their previous meeting, they, I recommended the Commission approve this or recommend a similar change for a plat that was off Beaver Loop Road to reflect the change in maintenance of Beaver Loop Road. Uh, city water and sewer is not available to subdivision. The property owners have already installed private wells and with Alaska DC. Approved septic systems and plat note 6 addresses wastewater disposal on the property. There's amusement of 15 feet for utilities on the property lines adjacent to the rights of way for Beaver Loop Road and Juliuson Street. And I recommend, um, that the Planning and Zoning Commission approve of the preliminary plat of the Newton-Segura subdivision, subject to the following conditions, which are further development of the property conform to federal, state, and local regulations. And that plat note 4 is removed because there is already a reference to the, the city maintained right of way. And there is not a need to reference the state maintained right of way. And this one has the usual attachments and overall, I feel it's a, it would help resolve this encroachment. End of staff report.
All right. Thank you. We, I guess, will look for a motion for Resolution PG 2020-14. Vice Chair Fikes?
Yes, I'd like to make a motion for PG 2020-14.
A motion to approve that? A motion for approval, yes?
Yes.
Okay. And do we have a second? Second by Commissioner Askin. Anyone wishing to speak to PG 2020-14?
There's nobody else online.
All right. So then we will close the public hearing, bring it back to the Commission for discussion. Any discussion or comments? Seeing, hearing none, we will please call the roll.
Vice Chairman Fikes?
Yes.
I think you're on mute. I don't hear you. Now you're on mute.
Uh, yes?
Perfect.
Okay.
Yes.
Commissioner Askin?
Yes.
Commissioner Greenberg?
Yes.
Chairman Twite?
Yes.
Commissioner Halsted?
Yes.
Chairman, motion passes.
All right. Moving on to item F, Public Hearings, and G, Unfinished Business. We have then takes us to page 2. There it is. I gotta scroll it down a little bit to item H, New Business. We have one item to discuss, called 14.20.180. Uh, see item 2, the Review Criteria for Variances. Staff report, please.
Uh, thank you, Chair Twite. And let me just look. Participants. Okay. And I may just have to give an overview and table this. I guess I, I don't see the, the city attorney on the list of participants and that, that could be my fault. I should have reminded him about the meeting. So I, I will take responsibility for not, um, giving him a reminder if he's not on the call. Um, but I'll, I'll go over my memo and the discussion I had with, with the city attorney. So, um, in my, my memo in the packet, it says, uh, I recap at the previous Planning and Zoning Commission meeting on May 13th. Um, the Commission requested some clarification. And the condition for granting a variance that states the special conditions or circumstances have not been caused by actions of the applicant and such conditions and circumstances do not really constitute pecuniary hardship or inconvenience. Um, and I had discussed this with, uh, the city attorney because a variance was granted by the Commission, um, that, that brought this to the forefront to focus on. The city attorney, uh, said that this, this condition is, is hard to meet. And we discussed the specific case and he, he felt it still met our code. I did have a site plan.
You froze, Elizabeth.
Yeah. Gone.
Ghost.
Yay, technology.
Yeah.
Yeah.
It always freezes in the best spot, though.
Okay. Uh, can I, can everyone hear and see me?
We can now.
Okay. Sorry, sorry about that. I'm not sure what happened. I, I switched after the, the first Zoom meeting to using my, um, my tablet. And it seems to be, I've used it for all kinds of Zoom meetings, but you never know. Um, anyway, so I had discussed the, the variance that the Commission considered at the last meeting with the city attorney. And I had a site plan from 2018 that showed, uh, this, the second sixpex on the parcel that the city approved. So I did have, um, you're muted. Some past doc. Uh, shoot.
I can hear you.
I'm not, I know I'm not muted. It's, I've got to be frozen.
Yeah, I, I could see you.
So can I?
You're not muted. You're right.
Okay, sorry. Uh, yeah. So anyway, the, I, I had some past documentation that the applicant at the previous meeting had indicated that this was their, their plan all along. So I felt that provided some support that, um, that it wasn't, uh, like merely an inconvenience. And this land had been granted from the city specifically for this use. So anyway, I, I was hoping, um, if, uh, Commissioner McIntyre, I hope you don't mind him. I'm calling you out because I, I know that you also discussed with the city attorney. So I don't know if you could just add to, um, add to the discussion or, um, if my, my take on what you had discussed sounds accurate.
Yeah, I can.
And sorry, that's a notice to the city attorney. All those my fault.
No. Um, yeah, I, uh, Scott had said he would, uh, participate in tonight's meeting and, uh, share his perspective. So I let it go at that, but he was kind enough. I, I, I went, I called him after the last meeting, as I said I would, and, uh, spoke with him about my concern that, and of course, I had that glitch, kind of like what you're having. The last time where, right after I spoke, I lost 10 minutes and came back in and everybody was done talking and I missed it all. But, um, but I shared with, with Scott that I, um, you know, that my concern was that we were granting a variance, but there was, there wasn't any evidence from the applicant or in my packet that showed that, um, this wasn't the applicant's fault. They were just coming forward and asking to, you know, do a sixplex on a piece of property that, you know, and exceeding the footprint that was allowable by code. And, uh, that I was all for the project, but, you know, I didn't feel like we could make law. We had to kind of abide by the law and we needed to have evidence that this wasn't their fault. And so he went back and did some research. I guess he went clear back to the 2018 meeting and listened to that meeting. And he said, uh, that indeed it was the city's fault that whoever, at that time, granted them the permission, apparently didn't bother to check with the code to see if they were going to exceed the amount of square footage that they were allowed or whatever it was. And, um, uh, went on to say that had it been the architect's fault, it would have still been the applicant's fault because the architect works for the applicant and is the applicant's agent. And so that would be erroneous to grant a variance to the applicant because the architect made a mistake. But because the city had not examined that and clarified matters, but went ahead and granted the, the permission to do this, that it wasn't the applicant's fault. And, uh, they shouldn't be held responsible. And that's really all I needed to hear. That's what I wanted to hear was, okay, then the applicant's off the hook. We've now met criteria 2 or condition 2 and could go forward. And he, he agreed and thought so also. And so I just wanted to, to verify that and clarify it. He was going to come and talk some about that, but, um, maybe at a, a future meeting, it would be worthwhile to have him, invite him back. But, um, that was the gist of our conversation, Elizabeth.
Okay. Um, I think what I'll plan to do is I can ask Scott to come to a meeting in the future. I might not make it in a specific agenda item and I'll just have him speak during the city administration report. Um, as long as that, uh, seems okay to the Commission that you feel the uh, discussion of the, the variance that was granted in this particular piece of code seems okay after recapping conversations, uh, secondarily tonight.
I think that would be very good. And I think it would be handy because, you know, I struggle with those every time we have them because, um, because of the, the training that we've gotten from most of the, the presenters up in Anchorage when we go to the training. They're usually very pro or anti, I guess, granting variances. And so it does become kind of a struggle. And it's like, well, I know if we took the emotion part out of it, it, it would be, seem to be more, more cut and dry. But then you look at the situation and you go, okay, well, obviously there's a, a tool to use a variance. And so it'd be nice to be able to maybe pick Scott's brain and along with the planner and, and anybody else, maybe city manager even as far as, okay, if this comes up, how do we proceed? Or, you know, give some, some potential, um, situations that may come up. And then maybe it'll help us a little bit better because it is a struggle. It's, it's, uh, you know, when, when you know that there's, there's commissions that have said, nope, move your building. And people have had to do it. Well, that's pretty, that's pretty hardcore and pretty harsh. And it probably, I assume it held up in, in court or when they appealed or however it was appealed. So I think that would be one of those things that would be great for everybody to, to get a better understanding, get our heads wrapped around it a little bit better.
And, uh, one other thing I can add to your tweet is, uh, the city, we, uh, like both, both, uh, the planning assistant Willie and I get asked quite routinely from people about variances because if we tell someone that, uh, their plan doesn't meet setbacks or, or, um, or use in a zone, people do ask about it a lot and, and we, we often advise against it if there's real, not really a reason. Because it, there has to be like something particular about the, the situation for variance to be granted. So I guess, I guess it is basically if someone hears that they're, what their plan doesn't meet code, they try to, they ask like, um, like anyone would like, is there any way I could be the exception? And, um, it is, I'd say, pretty routine. We, we tell them no for something like a setback or
Right.
Um, we're supposed to follow code. We can't just like let someone not follow code without a good reason, basically.
Right, right.
And I, I like your, your suggestion. Hello?
Yep.
I like the suggestion, uh, Chairman Twite, that it would be nice to have some, uh, not only routine but challenging examples that we could run by, you know, that panel and say, okay, just for discussion purposes, what would we do here?
Right.
And, uh, you know, I brought forward a, a situation, for example, this, this week, to Elizabeth about, you know, a situation where it appeared that, uh, somebody in the subdivision was going to build a house right across two lot lines, right across the lot line between two lots. They own both lots. They were going to put the house right in the middle between them, you know, right on the line.
Right.
And, um, and how would that? It, it, I guess it would be caught when they applied for a building permit. But, uh, um, you know, the, the, I guess in my mind, I was just trying to think of, well, is there a way to notify people ahead of time before they set their foundation and do all their dirt work and get everything set to go? And then, uh-oh, you know, now you got to move your house.
Right, exactly.
But anyway, that was just an example of, wow, that, that's a shame. Too bad they didn't know ahead of time. If they have a good builder, I assume. Yeah.
Yeah. And you know, uh, full disclosure, I've had to come into the city of Soldatna before and ask for a variance for where we had a setback deal. And, and it was, we had it staked out and it was a, a front yard setback from the property line to the front edge of the house. And the garage could be closer. And so we met the house one, but the garage stuck out in front of it. And when it came time to do the ASBIL, we realized that the garage stuck farther enough forward that we didn't meet the garage setback. And so, and it was, of course, the house was done just about when we were, we did the ASBIL. And so it was just one of those things that, um, we got it. But I got that look like, well, if it happens again, we might not do it. So make sure you've got everything dealt with. And we've located the lot corners and, and they stake the, the surveyor stake the corners of the building for us too. But it was just one of those things that It was just one of those things that happened. But like you said, I mean, where where do we draw the line of leniency with it? So. I think it'll be handy to have the attorney there to to go over. And plethora of situations that might work out for us to work in. On a future case where we can use it to reference. So. Anybody else have anything else to add to that?
Yeah, I have a question.
Yes.
So the consequences are it's either a grant of variance or move the building. There's nothing in between there.
Well, I think.
Because I don't know the main buildings have been moved.
No, I mean, it's, I've seen where foundations have had to be, you know, if they caught it at a foundation point, they, you know, dozed them over and started over again. But I think, and Elizabeth, you can answer this, the the city, the the building official has the authority within. A foot or 10% or some kind of a. Formula to grant a variance without coming to the planning and zoning commission, correct?
Yes, Chair Twate, I do not remember the exact number, but but that is true. That's if it's like something nominal, like a foot. The building inspector can approve, can say they meet their setback. X or whatnot. Well, there I do want to also state that someone can apply for an encouragement permit because the. Commission has granted one since I've been here and it was someone's garage. Was, I don't remember the details. It may have been. I think it was still on their property, but it did not meet setbacks and it was. It was holding up the sale of their house. And so the commission granted them an encouragement permit, which which basically said the the city is okay with this being there. I think one of the stipulations was if the garage is rebuilt, it would have to be moved, but it at least was a tool. For this person to sell their property and then in the future, whenever the garage is rebuilt, it would be remedied.
Gotcha. All right. Anyone else have any comments? Just. Go ahead, Henry.
Yeah, you know, on on these variances and I appreciate Mr. McIntyre, you know, bringing that up and. And, you know, it's not my position to provide testimony unless asked, but, you know, I was on council. When when the when the initiative, the the building folks came. And they had specific buildings they wanted to build. It was the city that subdivided it for them for that particular use. You know, but you didn't have that in front of you and I didn't have all the details either. With that, but you know, but but just kind of more to the point on on variances. Like I mentioned last meeting, you know, it's Scott Bloom that has to defend your your decisions. And including that one, but in but you have to consider the future ones. And if you if you make exceptions to the rules. Then you better make really good ones and why they're specific to that thing and that this is why. Because you'll deny one in the future. That may be similar and the city could get sued and lose because you've broken the rule for that. Whatever that is so many times. And by definition, it doesn't really exist anymore just because you've been been ignoring it, I suppose. So it's it's kind of good to not just consider what you're doing today, but how that's going to affect future decisions. You know, and just how you and how you support it.
Yeah, I think that goes to show again that just, and that's something I'm sure Scott, when we have a conversation, it'll just be. That putting your findings on the record is paramount in those situations so that you can defend it. For one reason and not for another, depending on. What the circumstances are. So good, good point.
Nope.
Oh. Yeah, a little phone call coming in. I got rid of that thing in a hurry. So, all right, we can move on then. Of course, I need that magic screen there. It is. So that takes us to item I pending items. We have none. Jay reports J1 City Council Councilman Nexted.
Okay, thank you, Chairman Twate. Counsel at our last meeting on May 20th, we we had a lot of different items, but we we certainly accepted, moved around a lot of money. Just kind of going through a list here, we enacted an ordinance 31202020. We accepted $26,545.90. Of asset forfeiture sharing funds and appropriation appropriated those funds to the police machinery and equipment tools account. So they they got a chunk of money there from from those forfeitures. Then we enacted unanimously ordinance 31212020. Adopting the annual budget for the fiscal year. So we 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 approved the budget with without any modifications. Next page here. And then we we acted enacted unanimously ordinance 31222020 and accepted appropriations for. Volunteer fire assistance grant from the United States Department of Agriculture. Forest Service passed through the state of Alaska of forestry for the purchase of forestry firefighting equipment. And that was for a sum of $7,398.90. Then we enacted unanimously ordinance 31242020. Accepting and appropriating meals, meals on wheels COVID-19 response fund grant. From Meals on Wheels America for the Kenei Senior Center expenditures in support of COVID-19 pandemic response. For a total of $20,000. Then we enacted unanimously ordinance 312020. 35, 31252020, accepting and appropriating additional nutritional transportation and supportive service grant funds. From the United States Department of Health and Human Services. Passed through the state of Alaska Department of Health and Social Services for the Kenei Senior Center expenditures in support of COVID-19. Pandemic response. That total was 18,375. And then then the the bigger dollar amount, we enacted unanimously ordinance 31302020. Decreasing estimated revenues appropriations in the general fund and increasing estimated revenues. Appropriations in the COVID CARES Act Fund and accepting federal CARES Act funding. Through the state of Alaska for expenditures in response to the COVID-19. Pandemic and that was for a total of. Seven million. 700,832. And so I've got a kind of a list on. Where those money was going. We we get this chunk of money, then we've got to distribute it into different areas. So what the city did. Administration presented to us was to produce five different accounts. Essentially in places we would split the money in. The first one was. For first responder incident management team payroll for 22,500,000. And then the second account is business and nonprofit entity recovery grants. And that was a total of $3 million. The third account was CARES Act Administration and non payroll expenditures. General contingency for $300,000. The fourth account were individual assistant grants for folks, 900,832. And finally, the the city resilience and recovery contingency. Of $1 million and that basically would go into capital projects and things like that. The numbers aren't. Are really hard numbers. We can, we can move money between these different accounts, but they had to be put into an account. So that we can determine how we're going to take them out of accounts and and get them into. Businesses and individuals' needs and also be able to cover our costs as we move forward. And we've got more legislation coming up at our next meeting. On just how we're going to divvy out that money to individuals and businesses in particular. Then we adopted unanimously resolution 202025. Fixing the the rate of levy of property tax for the for this for this fiscal year and that is is non changed. So it'll stay the same. Then we had a, we adopted a resolution to encourage the governor to modify the COVID-19 health mandate 010. To basically relax the the 14 day. Period when when it becomes. As soon as we, you know, is reasonable. We. Don't tell them when or anything like that. We're just encouraging that to to perhaps be modified. And then we adopted unanimously resolution 202019 adopting the capital improvement project. Plan to CIP for fiscal years 2021 through 2025. And we reviewed that before, then COVID. Came up and so it's been modified a little bit, mostly the airport projects and a few smaller ones because. We don't have a whole lot of extra cash really for for capital improvement projects. We we did postpone. A resolution that would recommend. The Borough enact their ordinance 2020-24. That would provide a vote by mail elections. And not that we weren't in support of it necessarily, but I think the council was looking to have a work session on it. Before we actually propose it. Approval of it. And as you know, when the, when anybody, the the borough, for example, gets has an ordinance, it's likely to be modified. So anything we're supporting would. Could very well change. So. We could support it after they approve it or as we move on. And. I didn't think, we didn't think, I don't think that was time of the S was of the essence. So we had a little bit of time. The Borough will be talking about that on their, I think it's the June. I think they have a June 2nd meeting, if I'm not mistaken. Then we adopted unanimously resolution 2020-31. Oh yeah, that's a, it's a lease. Airport reserve lands to the Alaska Department of Forestry on the airport. And that's something we do, I think annually. And we adopted unanimously resolution 2020-32 approving a memorandum of understanding with the Kenei Historical Society. To promote and to preserve and promote history of the Kenei. But that is, is where the cabins are that the Historical Society manages. That all really belongs to the the city of Kenei, but there's never been any kind of agreement with the Historical Society that's kind of. They have a docent there. They keep the grounds and all of that. So it just kind of. Kind of establishes, you know. That understanding. And then we adopted unanimously resolution 2020-33. Approving an agreement for use on cranes and offices and other equipment at the boating facility. And that's been. Not been leased out for a number of years. So the city dock cranes have been sitting pretty much idle. For for a number of years. So we're pretty anxious and happy that that's that's moving forward finally. We also, I'm almost there, Jeff. You're the only one I can see.
You're doing wonderful.
Yeah, but we we approved a lease agreement for lot two Kenei Spit subdivision. From North Pacific Seafoods Inc. to E East Foods Inc. And that's where the inlet salmon cannery is. On the south side of the river. It's a city owned property there. It used to be a gas field. And but anyway, so we, there was a transfer of the lease to a to another cannery ownership. And then the last item, I think, last item I have here is we, we, we had a discussion regarding resuming in-person council meetings. And we discussed that for quite a while and and what I expect we're going to do is at our next council meeting in June. Is we're going to be meeting back at the council chambers once again and. At the dais will be somewhat spread out, I believe. Jim Glenn Danning said he wants to be there, but he'd be happy to sit at the little kitty table up front. For additional separation. And I think Mr. Navar, Councilmember Navar, offered to call in through Zoom. So it's going to be kind of a Zoom. And in person, the the public can come. There'll be some spacing and I believe the. Public can also call in or whatever we call it through Zoom if they don't feel comfortable in a in a public space like that. So. We're, we're kind of moving forward. We're wanting to get back to having more regular type meetings where the public can be there and we can see each other face to face. The clerk, if she hasn't already, is is or has sent all of you an email. Have you received anything regarding meetings? If not, you're going to be getting one, kind of polling you what your, what your preferences are. For meetings. You can continue doing the Zoom. I haven't seen an example of the mail, the email, but you can continue a Zoom or you can come in and do something similar to what council is doing also. And I think she's just kind of trying to poll, see what you want to do. And if you haven't gotten that and perhaps. Since you're having a meeting this evening, you might want to just kind of discuss it amongst yourselves, what you feel comfortable with. But if you haven't gotten that, it's forthcoming.
I can interject my report with some additional information.
Great. Absolutely. And she's going to wait till her report, I think, to do it. So Henry, have you got anything?
Sorry, yeah. I supposed to interrupt, but no, sorry, but. Basically, yeah, okay, I can always, I'll just wait until my administrative report.
All right, Councilman Nexted.
Anybody have questions to me?
I do regarding the mail in ballots. Now that is, so it's not federally approved. So it's going to be for municipal elections only is the is the. Plan as of now.
Well, of course, we have Jacqueline on on the line, so it will be for. I don't think the state's gone there yet, but it'll be for municipal election, yes.
Okay.
And and it's, and it's going to be a hybrid is the intent, you know, you go, everybody will get a ballot. In the mail at wherever you're registered or you're, you only get one and it goes to your your address where you, you know, you've told the clerk. And you have options to. Mail it in. You can take it to a particular. Drop site where it's secured there or you can take it during election night. And it gets counted that way. So. It kind of covers all those options for for mailing if you feel like you need to do it in person.
All right. Anyone else have any questions for Councilman Nexted? All right, thank you. We will move on then to item J2 Borough Planning, Vice Chair Fikes.
Yes, nothing new to report. They had a plat committee meeting on Tuesday. They did not have a commission meeting and to my knowledge, there is nothing on the agenda at this time.
Wonderful. Thank you. Anything else, any questions or comments to directed at Vice Chair Fikes regarding borough situations? If not. We will move on to item J3 City Administration, Ms. Appleby.
Thank you. So I'm actually, I'll just read the the latest on the. The Zoom hybrid option. So the clerk told me today that the. The city's incident management team still has not finalized protocol for council chambers. They will be doing that prior to the city council meeting. So once that the protocol for how the meeting will work is finalized with the. The city's incident management team, then.
Uh oh.
Elizabeth, you went mute. I don't know if you can hear us.
Yeah, I can.
So it goes, as far as you saying that what's the protocols are in place and then you froze.
Okay, I blame, I can blame the city's Wi-Fi because that's why I'm connecting. So once the protocols are in place by the city's incident management team, the clerk will email the commission. Because you will have the choice to either stay with the Zoom format or you can also. Move to the the hybrid. Zoom in-person option that city council will be doing. And so they're, they're still working out the details of what that will look like, but likely. The commission would be spaced farther apart and then some commissioners would still attend via Zoom in order to accomplish that. That's what I have for COVID. I I guess I can add to that that city hall. Is open, though we're not. though we're not open quite yet in the, the usual way. We can now meet people by appointment in council chambers because there is more room to spread out. And so we can now do that because previously we could only meet people at the door. So far Willie and I have just been meeting people at the door and doing things over phone and email. But we're getting closer as, as things change. Oh, I wanted to know, there is a, I had a, a meeting that was organized by the borough just to get regional planners together. So it was nice, the planners from all of the, the borough cities were there. And then some G I X folks at the borough were there. So I think we'll do that again in the future. It was just an idea floated and it was, it was nice to come together like that. I'll note, one other thing for the historical cabins, Dan Castemore and I met with the Historical Society to talk about installing security cameras. The city received a grant to do that. And so I don't think they'll be there at the start of the summer, but we're looking for a late summer. Definitely in before winter this year for sure, but we at least have a plan. The city, next week, the planning department was involved a little bit in this. An Alpine Drive, there's some, well, there's some stuff that needs to be cleaned up. So the, the city is going to go in and get, there's some vehicles back there. And so Alpine Drive is as you're coming out of the city, it's a, it's not a road maintained by the city, but people go back there. So the city is taking some steps to get that area cleaned up a bit. Lots of movement on leases as reflected by Councilmember Nexted's report on city council agenda items. And then, oh, I wrote down the library has moved to curbside pickup and they're planning for tentative June 1st limited opening. The city has been working hard on potential funding to come from the CARES Act. And that is the end of my staff report or administrative report, I should say.
All right. Anyone have any questions? I've got one or two, I guess, one, but it's got two parts to it, either for you or for Councilman Nexted. And I'm just curious, with kind of the slow open that we're having on some of the city things, is there a decision on the Fourth of July parade or industry appreciation or any of that kind of stuff yet? Anyway.
Today I heard Jonna Beach who organizes that, she actually sent us an email as well stating that it has, the Fourth of July parade hasn't been canceled. They're continuing with the organization of it. But you know, it's kind of a wait, wait and see and, or if they can modify it in some way. So that hasn't been canceled.
Okay.
Chairman.
Yes.
Jacqueline, just to add to that, the city manager had mentioned at the, I think it was a previous council meeting, that he was going to be following, kind of like looking for guidance from DH, is it DHSS? And DHHS, I'm not sure the acronym for that, that department, but really just follow to see what other communities are doing and what's the safest way to move forward. And, you know, are we going to move forward? So it's, it's really just unknown right now.
Okay, great. Thank you. All right. If no one else has any questions of the administration, we will move on to item K, Additional Public Comments. Anyone out there?
No, there is not.
All right, then we will go to L, Informational Items. We have none. M, next meeting, June 10th. And I guess we'll move on to Commissioners' comments and questions. And we can ask what your thoughts are on, on a meeting type we want to go to. So let's go to that and go to Commissioners' comments and questions. Commissioner Halsted.
I have none.
What's your preference for meeting types? If you have any.
I am not a, a fan of Zoom, but I, I understand the need for it here. I, I prefer teams, but it's basically the same thing. This works just as fine as any other meeting, as long as we're able to convey the information appropriately. My concern with doing online meetings or, you know, quasi-closed meetings is that you're potentially preventing the public from being able to participate. You know, in this meeting, no one, not like we get a lot of people that come to them anyways, but certain people that are used to a public forum and they see the city halls closed. So they perhaps assume that meetings aren't going on right now. So an open public meeting, I think lends itself to more public participation, whether that's a good thing or a bad thing. That's the only downside to this type of meeting. But again, you know, as long as we're all getting the, the same information and we're all able to present and understand what's being presented to us, it, it does not matter to me how, how we move forward.
All right. Thank you. Commissioner McIntyre.
I don't have any other comments, but I guess as far as meetings are concerned, I, once I got the glitches kind of taken care of with this Zoom, I kind of enjoyed it. I like the idea of a hybrid, people being able to do whatever they feel most comfortable with. If we did go strictly to a in-person, I would ask that, you know, the six-foot space thing be, be honored. For me anyway, and, and I would probably wear a mask, but yeah, those are, those are my, that's my input.
Okay, sounds good. Commissioner Askin.
I don't have any other comments. I would echo Joe. I think that at some point, we're going to need to have a face-to-face meeting just so they know, the public knows meetings are going on. As for Zoom or face-to-face, I'm good either way.
All right. Commissioner Greenberg.
I like the Zoom option. I think it's a good option to have. I think we should keep that. I don't have any other comments.
Yeah, I mean, how, how else you could show up at a meeting, being at the Grand Canyon? How do you, how else do you do that, right?
Right, exactly.
Vice Chair Fikes.
I'm, I'm ready to go back to chambers. I mean, doing this twice, you know, the borough deal and then here, it's like, yikes, yeah. I'm ready to get back in chambers.
Very good. And I think, yeah, we can do exactly whatever council kind of comes up with for themselves. I think we mimic them as closely as any of the other commissions. And so I think, you know, I'm ready to have some, at least some kind of a hybrid, if nothing else. And, and Vice Chair Fikes, this is a perfect opportunity for me to say that I, my last little bit of public comment or my Commissioners' comments are, I have four lovely employees sitting around here that are being so quiet and not getting in front of the camera. I'm very proud of them like a dad. It's just a wonderful deal. So I'm sure that's about to change here in a second, but I have nothing else other than that. And with that, from Anchor Point, I will just tell you that it's nice and sunny out here now. And I guess with all the business complete, the meeting is adjourned. See you, everybody. Thank you.